All right. We will then call this meeting to order. Today's date is October 21st, 2024, and this is the Tel City Common Council adoption of the 2025 budget and salaries. If everybody could please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, our which stands one mission under God and the principle of liberty, justice, and moral law.
Thank you all. You may be seated. All right. Before we adopt the agenda, under new business, we need to add an item B, and it's the payment in lieu of taxes. Tel City Electric Resolution. And I do not have any additions other than that or any others?
Motion to adopt with change, with addition.
Okay. Motion made by Gerald, second by Brian. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda stands approved. All right, now we move into the adoption of the 2025 budget and salaries. So I'm going to turn this over to Connie to read those. She won't read them in their, some of them in their complete entirety, but some of them she will.
Okay, first of all, we're going to do the ordinance for adoption of appropriations and tax rates. Be it ordained and resolved by the Tel City Common Council that for the expenses of Tel City Civil City for the year ending December 31st, 2025, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of several funds herein named and for the purpose herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly specific and provided far by law. In addition, for the purpose of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Tel City Civil City, the property tax, levies and property tax rates are herein specified are included herein in budget farm, budget farm 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance slash resolution shall be in full effect, full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Tel City Common Council. We have the Casino Riverboat Fund. The appropriated budget is $64,000 and there is no tax levy. The General Fund appropriated budget is $5,614,086. The appropriated tax levy is $2,987,822 with an adopted tax rate of 1.4755. Debt service is $122,000. The tax levy is $117,003 with a tax rate of .0578. Police pension, a budget of $119,475. Local Road and Street, budget of $70,000. Motor Vehicle Highway, budget of $400,164. Cume Capital Develop, Cume Capital Improvement, $16,000. Cume Capital Development, budget of $173,000, tax levy of $119,116 for a tax rate of .05. Economic Development, a budget of $70,762. And then we have the funds that are called Home Rule Funds, the Tel City Port Authority, $150,000. Edit Fund, $1,688. Local Law Enforcement, $17,800. Loewett Public Safety, $780,198. William Tel Complex, $31,000. And Tel City Depot, $15,200. And then if this is the budget that we're, that's being presented to you all, and if you do pass this, then I do have a signature page for everyone to sign.
Okay.
Did you give the ordinance number?
I did not, because this one, it says ordinance on it, but we never give it a number on the tack, on this particular one. It doesn't, we don't give it a number at all.
Thank you.
This, you know, these budgets are what budget amounts are what the council did approve of. Now, they're, you know, usually every year, our net assessed value will go up from what I had to use at budget time, so that will help to lower that rate.
Yeah, I was just going to ask Connie, 15833, more than likely it will go down because the assessed valuation will go up.
Assess value will go up, yes.
Do you know what it was last year when we adopted?
Last year when you adopted, it was 1.5385.
Okay, and that ended up going down?
Down to 1.3025.
Okay, so it went down about .23 or so?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It did, it did go down from what was original.
Okay, thank you.
And I feel, and I know that it will do that again because I have checked what was certified for Tel City.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So council, you've had the ordinance for a resolution for appropriations and tax rates. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for second, third reading by title only?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion made by Larry, second by Brian. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
So then I have to read?
Just, not the whole thing, just the title.
I know. Ordinance or resolution for appropriations and tax rates for 2025.
Okay, and third reading?
Third reading is ordinance or resolution for appropriations and tax rates for 2025.
All right, so you've had first, second, third readings of this ordinance. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion made by Gerald, second by Larry. Okay, you said it so in sync over there.
It was in stereo.
It was, it was pretty good. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, good job.
Okay, now I'm going to send this down. I do need signatures on this, and also they have a little box here that you're supposed to check if you nay, yay, or if you're standing, so.
We're doing the, they're doing the salary part next.
And I want two of, I want two originals, yes.
We're on the, we just adopted the budget, we got to do the ordinance for the salary part.
Okay, okay.
All right. All, you want to do the salary, Connie, while you're doing that?
If you want, yes.
All right, so next part is the salary. So this is ordinance number 5-2024. And they've all got the updated copy?
Yes, they do.
So I won't read over and say all these salaries, but what I will do is read the top part and kind of skip down to section two and three, and that should.
Well, and then you have several other ordinances behind there.
Yes, so we'll start with the five, yes.
Okay.
And we'll do that, so, all right. Ordinance 5-2024, an ordinance of the city of Tel City, Indiana, adopting and establishing the 2025 annual salary distribution for elected officials from the following funds: general, water, wastewater, trash collection, and electric. Therefore, be ordained by the Tel City Common Council. Section 1, the annual salaries for Mayor, Clerk, Treasurer, and members of the common council for the calendar year are appropriated and payable for the purpose as hereafter provided to. Section 2, annual salaries for the Mayor, Clerk, Treasurer, and shall be paid in 26 installments payable at each biweekly payroll. The first such installment payable January 9th, 2025. The annuals, or the annual salaries for the council herein provided shall be paid in monthly installments payable on the last payroll of each month, the first installment being payable January 23rd of 2025 for services rendered. Section 3, this ordinance shall be ineffective as to the salaries provided herein and, or excuse me, on and after January 1st, 2025, passed by me to the council president of the city of Tel City, Indiana, this 21st day of October 2024, at the six, at the hour of 6:30 PM. All right, so you've had first reading. Is there a motion for suspender by second, third, and by title only? Well, not everybody all at once.
I think that's all right.
That's what you're going to get at.
Everybody's reading.
Well, it could be. I don't say, it sounds like a lot. I think the council.
I gotta go back and check on this because we, we just made some changes right here.
Okay.
What were you looking for, Mayor?
I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules for second, third reading by title only.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Larry, is there a second? Second by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, second reading, ordinance number 5-2024, an ordinance of the city of Tel City, Indiana, adopting and establishing the 2025 budget annual salary distribution for elected officials from the following funds. Third reading, ordinance number 5-2024, an ordinance of the city of Tel City, Indiana, adopting and establishing the 2025 annual salary distribution for elected officials from the following funds. So you've had first, second, third reading, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, second.
Motion made by Larry, second by Brian. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion adopted. All right, let's move on to the next one. Order number 6-2024, an ordinance of the city of Tel City, Indiana, adopting and establishing the 2025 annual salaries, wages, and fringe benefits of appointed city officials and its employees. Therefore, be it ordained by the Tel City Common Council. Section 1, that the calendar year for the following salaries, wages, and fringe benefits are established for the following officials and positions. And that goes on to, I'm going to read section 2A, just like the third page. Yeah, section 2A, patrol officers for the Tel City Police Department will be entitled to the following longevity pay increases based on a first-class patrol officer's salary. Section 2B, dispatchers, communications records, records coordinator, communication records clerk of the Tel City Police Department will be entitled to the following longevity pay increases based on a dispatcher's salary. Section 2C, police department rank increase if an officer has obtained the rank of chief, assistant chief, lieutenant, sergeant, or corporal. That officer will be compensated by $1,000 maximum annually for as long as the rank is retained. Section 2D, the police department incentive if an officer, dispatcher, communications record coordinator, and communications records clerk has earned a credential or destination designated, that employee's salaries will be compensated by $1,000 a month maximum annually for as long as their credentials or as, I can't even get that word out, designation has retained. Section 2E, Tel City Police Department personnel receive the following clothing allowance, holiday pay, and officer cellier phone allowance for the calendar year. Section 2F, the Tel City Police Department Reserve Division will receive the following compensation based on these criteria. Section 2G, patrol officers of Tel City Police Department work in traffic patrol detail under Indiana Criminal Justice Institute grants shall be paid at a rate of two times of that as the officer's regular hourly rate pay, regardless of the fund source. Ordinance, and that's in ordinance number 2-2024. Section 3, Tel City Volunteer Fire Department personnel, full-time and reserve volunteer firefighters will receive the following clothing and automobile allowance for the calendar year. Section 4, employees other than police and fire who choose not to receive furnished uniforms will receive an annual allowance of $350 for purchase of work-appropriate attire. Section 5, a two-hour minimum overtime rate, time and one-half, will be paid to the designated hourly employee per call-out. Time worked following the two-hour minimum will also be paid at the overtime hourly rate. Section 6, any employee deemed necessary by the department head to operate equipment who has a, who as of January 1st, 2023, holds a valid commercial driver's license, CDL, has provided all paperwork to the clerk, or excuse me, the city of Tel City Clerk Treasurer, will receive a $1 increase in their per-hour wage. Any employee after this date who obtains their commercial driver's license, CDL, and provides all paperwork to the city of Tel City Clerk Treasurer will receive a $1 increase in their pay, or per pay, in their per-hour wage, starting with the next payroll cycle. Any salary employee who has a commercial driver's license or obtained one will also receive the $1 per-hour increase in pay based on their current rate, hourly rate. It is the employee's responsibility to keep all the CDL information up to date with the Clerk Treasurer. Any employee who loses their, his CDL license will lose $1 per-hour raise beginning on the date of the license, it is terminated. This section went into effect on June 12th, 2022. The $1 per hour will not be taken into consideration when calculating any salary increases. Section 7, salaries of the city council members and the city attorney are paid on a monthly basis. Section 8, this ordinance shall be in effect as to the salaries, wages, and fringe benefits provided herein on and after January 1st, 2025, passed and adopted by the common council of the city of Tel City this 21st day of October 2024, presented by me to the common, to the council president of the city of Tel City, Indiana, on this 21st day of October 2024, at the hour of 6:30 PM. That's a lot. All right, so you've had orders, is there a motion for second, third reading by title only?
Motion.
Motion made by Brian, is there a second?
First.
Second by Mike. Motion was by Brian, second by Mike for second, third reading by title only. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Order number 6, 2024, an ordinance of the city of Tel City, Indiana, adopting and establishing the 2025 annual salaries, wages, and fringe benefits of the appointed city officials who are employees. Third reading, ordinance number 6-2024, an ordinance of the city of Tel City, Indiana, adopting and establishing the 2025 annual salaries, wages, fringe benefits of adopted city officials and employees. So you've had first, second, third reading of that. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion made by Gerald, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Order number 7, 2024, an ordinance of the city of Tel City, Indiana, adopting and establishing the 2024 salaries and wages of the city officials and employees appropriated from utility funds. Therefore, be it ordained by the Tel City Common Council. Section 1, for the calendar year for the following salaries and wages are appropriated for the city-appointed officials and positions. Section 2, seasonal personnel of the water, wastewater, stormwater, and trash department. Section 3, a two-hour minimum overtime pay rate, time and one-half, will be paid to the designated hourly employee per call-out. Time worked following the two-hour minimum call will also be paid at the overtime rate. Section 4, water plant weekend operators will be paid for four hours at time and one-half on both Saturdays and Sundays. Section 5, wastewater weekend on call-out operators will be paid at, paid for eight hours at time and one-half on both Saturday and Sunday. Section 6, employees who choose not to receive furnished uniforms will receive the annual cloth, annual allowance of $350 for purchase of work-appropriate attire. Section 7, the wastewater superintendent will receive the following cellier allowance for the calendar year. Section 8, any employee deemed necessary by the department head to operate equipment who has, of January 1st, 2023, holds a valid commercial driver's license, CDL, and has provided all the paperwork.
That's everything you've read before in the other section, it's in the other.
You guys want to keep hearing it, or I can, I'll rattle it off real quick, just keep it in sync. I'm, I've come this far, might as well just take it home.
Okay, go ahead.
All right.
It should be worded exactly.
Has provided the paperwork to the city of Tel City Clerk Treasurer, receive $1 increase in their per-hour wage. Any employee after this date who obtains a commercial driver's license, CDL, and has provided all the paperwork to the city of Tel City Clerk Treasurer, will receive a $1 increase in their per-hour wage, starting on the next payroll cycle. Any salary employee who has a commercial driver's license or obtained one will also receive $1 per-hour increase in pay based on their currently hourly rate.
Go ahead.
Are you laughing at me?
Yeah, I wanted to see if you'd pick up on my mistake.
I caught it.
Oh. It is the employee's responsibility to keep all the CDL information up to date with the Clerk Treasurer. Any city employee who loses the CDL license will lose the $1 per hourly raise beginning on the date of the license is terminated. This section went into effect June 12th of 2022. $1 per hour will not be taken into consideration when calculating any salary increases. Section 9, the salaries of the city council members and the city attorney are paid on a monthly basis. Section 10, this ordinance shall be in effect as to the salaries, wages, and fringe benefits provided herein and on after January 1st, 2054. Very good, Connie.
I know, I know, that's a deal.
Don't be dead, Connie.
I know.
Well, I, I plan to still be around, I'm just saying.
Yeah, after this meeting.
That's funny. All right, passed and adopted by the common council of the city of Tel City this 21st day of October 2024, presented by me to the council president of the city of Tel City, Indiana, this 21st day of October 21st, at the hour of 6:30 PM. All right, with that change, obviously that's a typo.
That's a typo, we will.
She will, we will fix that.
We will fix that.
You know, it's funny, I thought I know, in that one, you say that CDL, any employee will lose his CDL, it should be his or her, if you really want to, I mean, or their, or the employee.
Or whatever.
I know, it's okay. That's just kind of old school, putting that in.
I know, okay.
All right, so with that change, from 2054 to 2025, is there a motion for second, third reading by title only?
So moved.
Motion made by Larry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gerald. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Order number 7, second reading, order number 7-2024, an ordinance of the city of Tel City, Indiana, adopting and establishing the 2024 salaries and wages of the city officials and employees appropriated from the utility funds. Order number 7-2024, an ordinance of the city of Tel City, Indiana, adopting and establishing the 2024 salaries and wages for the city officials and employees utility funds. You have this first, second, and third reading. I think we have a typo again. Did anybody catch it? It says, it says, establishing the 2024 salaries and wages at the top of that one.
2025.
It says 2024 right there.
Yeah, no, but it should say 2025.
Right? It's right, it's, yeah, 7-2024, it's the very top.
And it should say 2025.
Okay, well, I didn't catch it the first time, it was the second time, and then the third, it kind of distracted me.
Otherwise, we've got to go back, people are back paying.
Ooh, that could be a mess, yeah, don't do that.
I'm sure you're not looking into that.
All right. So we're at the further discussion point, I imagine, but we haven't, we haven't had a motion yet to do that. We're almost there. All right, so we have those two changes in 7-2024 ordinance, it's the, on the very first page, in that first sentence, it should say 25, not 24, and then it shouldn't say 54, it should say 25, on that back of the pager, towards the bottom, section 10. Is there a motion to adopt?
With those changes.
With those two changes.
Motion.
Okay, a motion made by Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gerald, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion stands approved, all right. Hey, that's pretty good, Connie, you did all that. That's the only two little typos you made, you did good.
Shouldn't be any.
Well, hey, when you start looking at 24, 25 dates, it's easy to, but you got a, you got a good council that's got your back, that'll help you out.
That's right, they find my mistakes, that's good.
Well, they didn't find that one, I found that one, you know, and the his, I guess, but, all right. So that is all for the budgets and salaries, so now we're going to move down to new business, the Tel City Electric Department 2025 budget. I don't know how much they need to say, if they're going to say anything, you guys may be great, but we have a cover page, kind of some bullet points there of the things that they're planning to do for 2025 and things. I don't know if you got a chance to all look over it, it's done a great job, bullet point in it, makes it simple, easy to follow. Does anybody have any questions on the 2025 budget summary?
I don't think you've taken a breath in 30 minutes, but.
Well, I can, I can rattle it off, I'm telling you. I could read it faster if you need me to.
I'm tired, I'm tired of work.
Sometimes I do the reading, but I was.
Well, you took off, you were smart, weren't you? All right, if there, is there anything specific you want to highlight, Andy?
I can, I can do some highlights here, because I know we've got new council members, just kind of.
Pick up your top five or six out of this that you think's the most important, just, or give them off if you want.
Yeah, so a couple, a couple key points here, and I'll touch on some things, I know Larry, Gerald, I think you've been on the council before, so I know you've probably done it, but, so our overall budget, 84% of our budget's out of our control. It's purchase power, it's Loewett taxes, that's things that we have to pay for outside sources. So 16% of this budget's, if you want to say, is in our control, for those that are new to the council. This year, overall budget, we got about a 3% decrease from last year. That's, a big part of that is purchase power's coming in a lot cheaper this year than years past, which is a good thing. So how would that work out for our customers? So our tracker revenue is, when we do our, set our rates, set our rates three years ago, we give those to MPa, and when they have increases, they increase the tracker. It's a pass-through to kind of offset the cost, that we don't have to come back to, to a rate study every year to come to see the council. Last year, almost 3/4 of a million dollars was cut through the tracker, this year we're only projecting 180. So that will be a direct refund or savings to our customers across the board. So that, that's a good thing, we should see this coming year. Let's see, some other highlights, big ones in the budget this year, so we'll, we completed the first phase of our new substation. We have it in our budget to go ahead and start the engineering of this coming year to start the second side. Hopefully, at the end of the year, next year, we'll start ordering equipment. So we've got $312,000 in our capital projects for that. We also got lucky and got put on a list for another bucket truck. It's actually going to be here by the end of this coming year. That's around $300,000.
No, wait a minute, you said you put one in, it's going to be here in less than a year?
Yes, so they, they did some trim packages down for municipalities, but we got lucky because he knew we were looking at getting on the list, and it was actually two and a half years out.
Yeah.
They had a utility back out, and this truck meets our spec.
How lucky are you?
Now, I bet, man, that it'll be here next November, I would not put money on that, but.
It took how many years for that last one, four almost?
Four and a half.
Yeah.
So that's why we're kind of getting on this, on this ball soon. If we can get this truck in, it'll kind of set us up for a while to be good. Paige is probably shaking her head, yes. So that's another big one in there. We also got it set aside that in our reserves, we're going to increase one of our reserves to our E2 customers for brake replacement at one of our other substations. That's ongoing process, it's a four-year project, and it's about $250,000 a year is what our cost would be to upgrade that, that substation. So those are the highlights for this year. If y'all have any questions, I'm open.
So one of your bullet points here is this, MPa purchase power cost estimate shows an approximate 4% to 5% decrease from prior year due to reduction in the energy cost adjustments Tel City customers receive a reflection of this through the tracker, the amount of bills.
Correct. So that, that was that decrease I was talking about.
That's a big deal for them, really.
Yes, it is.
I need it again because I want you to highlight that, you know, when people talk about bills going up, yours, you're going to see a little difference in yours.
Yep.
Break.
Yep, I can tell you, some of the investor owns are asking anywhere from 15% to 25%. We get these readings every month from MPa, you know, they're glad to show us, here's what they're asking for. You know, this, this past year, I joined the executive committee, so I kind of have a hand in the rates, the over-collection, because the fuel costs and coal costs and everything came down quite a bit than what they projected. We're actually going to spread these costs over the next couple of years. So hopefully, our rates will stay pretty flat-lined for the next few years, which is our best one, so.
When other, you know, electric utilities, you're seeing significant increases, ours is, you know, kind of staying flat rate.
Staying flat, yep.
That's a win.
It is.
Don't gloat in front of a CenterPoint customer right now.
Well, that's why, I wasn't going to call you out, utilities specifically, but, but.
Well, yeah, so another point to that, I know some of y'all were able to make it to the ribbon cutting, came to the, to the lunch that we had afterwards, and I told some of the members then, APPA put out a rate study back in March, there's 118 utilities across the state of Indiana who are ranked 12th in the lowest rates. So I think that's pretty, pretty darn good. The closest one around us, I think it's Ferdinand, it just comes slightly in lower than us, but we'll try to get them.
We'll turn out some more lights, save some, and get down just a little bit.
But, so, we're in a good spot.
Well, I mean, it just goes to show you, years ago, and this is, reflects on two of our board members, how great MPa, it has been for the city. That changed, Gerald, he was on the council and was, you know, had a hand in that, that foresight really set Tel City up and our residents, and some of our larger users like the Hocke, or where Brian works, to be competitive and save money, and it was the right choice, it shows. You know, sometimes when you do something like that, you never know the outcome, but But it's been proven, and. It goes to show you what council member, your appointments to the electric board, how they take that into consideration.
Foresight and long-term planning in utilities is absolutely essential, and we've had that.
Related to EMPA discussions with Andy, I wish we could encourage the City of Hamilton to become a member of EMPA, because I think there's some networking as well as some training opportunities that would reduce Telside Electric's costs if it could be shared with Hamilton, so.
I, I think those conversations will occur. You know, I can't say tomorrow, but in the, in the near future. I've had some discussions when I was at the AIN conference. And other communities close by us, it's.
And Andy and Telside Electric, I appreciate they provide a lot of, I don't know, a lot, but provide supportive services for both Troy and Hamilton. Just a courtesy.
We do.
I appreciate, but I appreciate the job you guys are doing. If you could only do something about the squirrels.
We talked animals.
If we could do an open season on them for about a month. Yeah, I know. You know what else? The same pole.
Was it?
That we're trying to get rid of, yes.
I still think you guys should make the squirrel your mascot with a little t-shirt, I heart TC Electric.
Oh, all my guys would do that, 'cause it's, yeah, they're, every time they, they love to get that call.
The whole Chick-fil-A, you know, eat more chicken, cow.
Oh, man.
Squirrels, I mean, I'm saying, you'd get hit.
If he lives up there, he could go down there and take care of the squirrels.
He's feeding them, probably.
Don't go and joke with my old utilities, my guys. They used to say, I swore they kept a bag of corn, and everyone's, on top of transformer, just so they could work some overtime. But guys tell me they don't, they don't do that here, but for a while, we had some corn outside in front of our main office, and I couldn't figure out where it came from, so. One other thing I wanna point out is that the last, the substation addition we just did, we did that, we were able to use reserves and not take out any loans, which saved tons of tax, or taxes, interest rates. We're starting this process this year. It's a long-term project. The engineers already told me, we're looking at twenty twenty-seven before we get a transformer. So it's, it's pushed out. One key thing, the foundations, the footwork's already there, so we're gonna use our guys to do as much work as possible to save even more money. Putting up the steel, putting up the bus work, all the switches, we're gonna do ourselves. When we started the original project, we were around six point five million in reserves, and Paige is projecting us at the end of twenty twenty-six to be around seven million. So we'll have some costs coming out of that before the end of twenty-six, but we'll be about where we were at this time, and we fully expect to get a fund, decide a reserves again, and save us tons of money. So that, that's, that's the hard work, these two gentlemen here and the rest of my board, and the council in the past for trusting us with that, so. Everything that we make, that we make goes back, we put it right back into our system, so.
Okay, council, so, little ordinance for that. I'm assuming this is twenty twenty-four dash eight?
No, this is an ordinance, so it's going to be twelve seventeen.
No, this is a short one.
I didn't know if you were getting one out.
This is a short one, I'm gonna take this one. Order number twelve seventeen of the Common Council of the City of Telside, Indiana to accept and adopt the budget of the Telside Electric Department for the fiscal period twenty twenty-five. Whereas all municipality, excuse me, whereas all municipal utilities are required by the State of Indiana, presents Indiana Code eight, one point five, three dash four, section four, A, six, to submit a budget to the municipal legislative body. Whereas the Board of Directors of the Telside Electric Department by resolution number R two four one zero one five B has adopted the budget. And if you guys are questioning, that's attached just directly behind this one here. Whereas the resolution of the Board of Directors for the Telside Electric Department was presented to the Honorable Mayor and the Common Council for the first reading on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Whereas the Board of Directors for the Telside Electric Department respectfully request that the budget be accepted and adopted as presented. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the budget as presented by the Telside Electric Department is hereby accepted and adopted. Be it further resolved that a copy of the budget be placed on file in the Office of the Clerk Treasurer of the City of Telside and the Office of the Telside Electric Department. By resolution of the Common Council of the City of Telside in special session, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Approved by his honor, the mayor, at the time and date recorded below. All right. Is there a motion for second, third reading by title?
I don't think there was a motion for the first reading.
He skipped that on all of them tonight, when we had any of the ordinances.
I believe it's understood.
He was implied. Sounds like a lawyer over here, he's just rubbing off.
I had the motion for the first one and the comma for the second.
And the comma for the second. There you go, I'll do it again. Second, second, third reading by title, and motion made by Brian, seconded by Mike. All those in favor, say aye? Opposed? Because you say nay, I have to. They don't mean, I'm like, y'all, you're reading it. Okay, second reading, order number twelve seventeen of the Common Council of the City of Telside, Indiana. Third reading. Order number twelve seventeen of the Common Council, City of Telside, Indiana. First, second, third reading?
Got it.
I didn't finish that last little paragraph. You're all good. Is there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion made by Gerald, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Now, we've got. We've got one more here to do. This is a resolution, this is item B that we added to it for the payment lieu of taxes. So the good news is, resolutions require only one reading, and I don't have to use second, third, and all that. So just to keep Larry happy, is there a motion to read resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two?
Motion.
Oh, second.
Okay, made by Gerald, seconded by Larry. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Jeff, I used the same one as last year, but just changed the dates.
I was gonna say, I had it on my computer, and I wondered, did you get this from me? So, 'cause I know Andy and I communicated about it, and I had worked on it, and I could not remember if I sent it, but he filled in the gap, and I reviewed this.
I know you were gonna be here in November, and we got this put on there, so I was just trying to.
Yeah.
All right.
Looks perfect.
All right. First and only reading here. All right, so resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two, resolution authorizing the request for voluntary payment from the Telside Electric Department as an alternative to payment in lieu of taxes. Whereas the Common Council of the City of Telside, Indiana has traditionally accepted a payment in lieu of taxes from the Telside Electric Representative to a tax evaluation form provided by the City of Telside by the State Board of Accounts. And whereas the City of Telside, Telside Electric Department have acknowledged that the Telside Electric Department is not required to make such payment pursuant to the provisions of Indiana Code eight dash one dash two point one dash twenty-two. And whereas the City of Telside and the Telside Electric Department have entered into an agreement whereby the Telside Electric Department will make a voluntary payment of one hundred thousand dollars rather than make a payment in lieu of taxes. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Common Council of the City of Telside that the Telside Electric Department shall hereby pay to the City of Telside the sum of one hundred thousand dollars as a voluntary payment for the calendar year twenty twenty-four, which sum shall be deposited by the Telside Clerk Treasurer into the general fund. Be it further resolved that the Telside Clerk Treasurer is hereby authorized to execute and deliver an appropriate voucher request and payment for the voluntary payment from the Telside Electric Department. Passed and adopted by the Common Council of the City of Telside this twenty-first day of October, twenty twenty-four.
Did you say for the calendar year of twenty twenty-four?
Payment for the calendar year of twenty twenty-four.
Paid in twenty twenty-five.
It's like paid in, it's like property tax, property taxes, paid in arrears. All right, so is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Well, who's got it now? Mike, Mike's got it, who's second?
I'll say it.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Don't worry, I was gonna read, Gerald's giving me a look, don't get me on that. You want me to read it more? All right.
Give me, that's the original.
Oh.
Can I have that back?
Now, I used a pencil, I told you.
I know, I'll change that.
I didn't know that was the original, I'm sorry.
I'll get these all signed and.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, there's nothing else for the council. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Larry, seconded by Brian, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?